Okay, it's eight thirty and I'm calling the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. First order on, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens who wish to address the board on any item that's not on the agenda? Steve, we got anybody?
We have no one, Mr. Chair.
Next, we have approval, payment of bills and vouchers.
I'll offer a motion to approve the payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Right, next, we have a group of people here from West Central. Y'all would like to come up?
We do have a group. A couple of our board members are here with us. I think you're fine, unless you want to, yeah. I'll put your button.
Am I good? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Glad to be here again this year for our annual visit and updates from West Central Initiative. My name's Greg Wagner, I'm the Director of Business and Economic Development for West Central. So what that really means is I oversee our economic development planning work and our business development work. Typically, when I talk about the business development work, I talk about lending, but since the COVID pandemic, our business development has been quite more extensive in helping deliver programs on behalf of the state of Minnesota to our small businesses across the nine counties that we serve, including Clay. So really, we're in the midst of that right now, so my update is going to be focused a little bit on our planning work. We are a economic development district with the Federal Economic Development Administration, so are recognized as a district which brings funding resources to eligible projects from the federal government. As part of our planning work, we develop a five-year plan for the region that helps identify projects that are in alignment with that plan and they receive extra points for funding. That's a very small work of our planning work. We also meet with communities on individual issues that the communities are facing and want to identify some solutions for or next steps. And a lot of our work in Clay County is really in the planning stage right now. I typically would have a lot of numbers to share with you about projects that we're working on and quantify our work, but a lot of that is in discussion. I think some of that is related to the current economic situations with inflation and interest rates from banks being so high. You know, the housing market has cooled, the business growth has cooled as well. You know, the intended outcomes of those high interest rates are working in our communities, but that also has negative effects. Primarily what my work has focused on, or our department's work has focused on, is, as I mentioned, delivering state programs. So during the pandemic, we delivered a lot of direct business relief grants that the state of Minnesota provided. We administered and vetted and distributed to communities, or actually to the businesses in those communities. One of the major projects that's being worked on right now, if you have heard, is the Main Street Economic Revitalization Program, which provided funding for specific corridors across the state of Minnesota. Highway ten was one of those corridors, starting from the Red River Valley on Center Avenue here in Moorhead, all the way over to Bluffton on the far eastern side of our region. We had one point eight million dollars for this specific corridor. And in the update that Rebecca has for the kind of the financial investments that we've had, there's actually only one project that's listed in that update over the last year that was in Moorhead. That is only one project of many that we have finalized and distributed the funds. We're working on projects, multiple projects here in Moorhead. There's a couple of projects in Holly and there's another project in Dilworth that are all eligible. We're kind of finishing up the grant agreements and the documentation for those to get the funding out here before, before the beginning of July, actually. So, and then another big project that's going on right now is the Promise Act Grant, another state of Minnesota program that the legislature passed last year. It was a total of eighty-six million dollars statewide and WCI was written in as administrator for this program on behalf of our region, where we have two years of one point one five million dollars in business assistance grants we're providing. And that, this year's program opened on May first and application deadline is May thirty-first. And it is a competitive grant program that for-profit and certain nonprofit businesses can apply for to receive a ten thousand, twenty-five thousand, or fifty thousand dollar grant that will go towards operating expenses for that business. So we'll take in all the applications until May thirty-first and then we have a scoring matrix and then we'll distribute those funds accordingly to the highest scoring projects. And we've already received in the fourteen days, over a hundred and ten applications for that program. So we anticipate that the money's going to go fast, it'll open again next year. And then we'll also be launching a Promise Act Loan Program, which provides for construction redevelopment dollars at three percent interest. So we're going to get through the grant part first and then, and launch the loans. And one of the things that I'd be remiss to mention is the Clay County Loan Fund. That is still a tool in the pocket for Clay County businesses and we utilize that when we can as needed. It's just, we haven't done a lot of loans lately. The two loans we've done actually were both, well, one was in Moorhead. The Kid Co. Children's Museum Play Area expanded, we provided financing for that. And then Adlin Holdings, which is a childcare center just south of Moorhead, got some expansion dollars from us as well. So they, they are a model of childcare that is working and is successful and so that was a project that we have funded in the past and we're happy to provide additional funding for their expansion. So I'll pause there if there's any questions, otherwise I'll turn it over to Rebecca for her part.
Any questions for Greg? Not yet. I'm sure you'll think of some, though.
I got one question.
There you go.
Greg, did Eldron and Holly, have they applied to any loans or?
So I've been talking, it's kind of one of those, in planning stages, I've talked to Eldron a couple times and so we're on each other's radar for one, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Greg. And I will leave this, Stephen, I'll leave this list of all of the grants and loans that we've been making in Clay County since January first, two thousand twenty-three, eight hundred ninety-seven, four hundred and seventy-one dollars in grants and loans. I have to say, a lot of those grants came from a community fund out of Barnesville. They have a very active community fund. I was just in Barnesville at their city council meeting last night and we work a lot with Karen Lauer and her folks there, so they've been very active. We did have some two thousand twenty-three discretionary grants that we made for a total of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, many of them here in Moorhead. I know that we also did some sponsorships last year of Welcoming Week programs that happened here and I think Yoke Sim was involved in some of those. Happy to have two of our board members sitting behind us here, Yoke Sim Gunaratney and Janice Tweet and Paul Krabenhoff, thank you for your service on our EDD board along with Deb White. So we are making more sponsorships for Welcoming Week this year, but I can't disclose who's getting them because they haven't even been notified yet. But we were able to make up to two thousand dollars in sponsorship grants to several organizations this year. So I will leave this with you. I'm Rebecca Peterson, I'm the Director of Development, not Economic Development, but fundraising and development. So I'm here to thank you for your past support. Hopefully, we're giving you a return on your investment that's made it worth your while. We've decided to do this differently than in the past and I will send a letter of request through your administrator so you can discuss additional funding for us in the future when we're not in the room. I think that's probably a little more amenable. But thank you for your past support and I just want to draw attention to some of the things in your packet, including our two thousand twenty-three Ripples of Good Annual Review. You're listed in there as one of our donors along with several other, well, all of our counties have been supportive, all nine counties. And then some of the work that we've been doing with businesses, individuals, nonprofits, we've launched our Start a Ripple campaign because we realized that every dollar that we invest in our region starts this ripple of impact. So if it's a ten thousand dollar grant and somebody goes out and finds matching funds, just creates this larger swell of support throughout our region. Also want to remind you that we're having, as part of our annual events calendar, we have our Seventeen Rooms Event in Morris on June twelfth, which talks about how we are working very diligently to become a sustainable region through our work in economic development, our work in climate, our work in rural democracy. You remember us talking about this last year. The program continues in its second year, so if you know of somebody who'd like some coaching in running for school board or city council or, I'm not trying to put you out of a job, but if you're going to retire and they should be learning how to become a county commissioner, there's some opportunities there as well. So did I forget anything, Greg?
No, I think that's.
Yeah. Any questions for me or Greg or our board members? Do you want to add anything?
I don't like to. No, I'll just, I'll just. I, I want.
No, just, just push that red.
It's been a pleasure to be here and I want to thank you for the support that you have given us as Clay County Commission's to Culture Diversity Resources. You need to know I look like thirty years old, right? I started in nineteen ninety-four and it has served, you know, the Moorhead area and Clay County really well. And I would say that I've been serving on the West Central Initiative Committee Foundation coming up to six years now, I couldn't believe time flies. But I will remain in other capacity for the West Central Initiative Foundation because they play a very important role. And if you go to their website, you will learn a lot of things about climate change, DEI issue, workforce, housing, childcare. They play a very big role in our area because Clay County is one of the nine counties that are being served by the Committee Foundation in the northwestern part of Minnesota. So don't hesitate to contact me, I think Steve know how to contact Culture Diversity because we'll be more than happy to partner with Clay County to do the work that we need to do. I'm a very strong supporter of Minnesota, you know, Extension Service, they do a very good job in many different areas, so I'll be more than happy to, you know, work on that. So if you have any question, you need to know, we just started the entrepreneurship program, which is training for people who want to start small business. And the money came from deed. It was a subcontract from Minnesota Department of Employment and Education, you know, Department and Workforce. And so it is also creating an opportunity for small business to be created in the Clay County area and we will work very closely with, I think his name is Larry, right? That the person was in charge of the community development area that is in Moorhead, right? So he will be working with us on the Center for Entrepreneurship in whatever capacity there might be, so. Any question?
Thank you, Yoke Sim.
Thank you.
Yoke Sim is rotating off our board in June and, but we are keeping her involved with some of our special projects and also she's going to be hard to replace, but her contributions to our work in diversity, equity, inclusion and all of the work that we've done in that realm have been invaluable, so thank you, Yoke Sim.
Frank.
I have one question. You said you had training for new people or people that want to run for city council or county, is that a class or is it a one-on-one thing?
So we have like multiple levels, it's our rural democracy program and there's a brochure on the right-hand side, I believe, of your packet. We have weekend trainings for people who just want to dip their toe in the water and find out more and decide, do I really want to run for office? We've done, I think, three different weekend trainings, I was at a couple of them. It was really interesting to watch people like just be curious and but by the end of the weekend say, I am going to run for that township position in my township. And in, this woman is now on the township board. Then we have like a six-week course for credit where they actually do a lot of online work and then in-person work to prepare them to run for office and I think to know what they're getting into. The mayor of Fergus Falls also works with us at West Central Initiative, he's going to become a full-time employee. And it's, you know, what's the process like and then once you're elected, what's it like after you're elected to a public office? So different levels and we're always accepting new applications. We've had a couple of incidents where we have a waiting list, but then we open up another weekend training, so.
Is there a cost to that program?
There is no cost to the participants for the second year. We got funded through the McKnight Foundation, so we're wrapping up the first year of funding, but we have one more year of funding, so absolutely no cost to participants except they might have to pay for their gas to get to the training, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Frank, can I add on?
You can hear that it's different capacity of training and it's free, but more important is nonpartisan, but also it's very good training for volunteers. I don't know about you, when you go to a lot of places, there's a lack of volunteers and it's an opportunity to say, hey, before you even run for office, why don't you volunteer? And, you know, be in this committee so that you can gain your experience and connections. So I just want to say that it's not just for people who want to run for office, but if you can run, you should also volunteer and that will be a good opportunity for our community.
Good point.
I'm trying to get out of it, no.
Hey, Frank, you have a lot of connections, you should have someone that you could delegate and get them to the activity.
Thank you.
Steve? Any other questions or do you guys have other? Paul.
Thank you. So two things. When we had our M staff training, I found this ripple very helpful as a guide, just which you explained already, but these profiles, I think, are fantastic. I'm big on numbers, I guess, and just knowing the layout of everything, but this is a really good piece. And then if I can go back, Greg, you mentioned about some upcoming grants that were going to be going out in July and maybe the money dispersed in August that you mentioned and they were in Clay. Is there a chance when those are done, maybe you could get a, some sort of report back to Steve that we can find out what, who and what?
Yeah, I absolutely can get a rollout summary of recipients, both for the Main Street Revitalization Program and then also, you know, I would assume that there's going to be some Clay County businesses as well that receive the, some of the Promise Act funding as well, so.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any, any final remarks from you guys?
Just, we'll see you again next year, but in the meantime, Greg's card, my card, they're in your packet. Pick up the phone, give us a call anytime if you know how to reach us, so happy to help wherever we can.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Sheriff, you're up next for a request approval to enter into an MOU with Minnesota State University of Moorhead.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thanks for having me this morning. If I may just start off with the fact that it's National Police Week and it's time that we honor and we remember those that have given the ultimate sacrifice protecting their communities. And if you're available tomorrow at twelve fifteen in front of the Law Enforcement Center, we are going to be doing a law enforcement memorial ceremony with our Honor Guard along with the Moorhead Police Department Honor Guard as well. So with that, I will go into the request. If you recall, last year, myself along with an individual from MSUM came for this exact same request to enter into a MOU with Minnesota State University, Moorhead, for a Violence Prevention Program. And also the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center is going to be part of that, the Moorhead Police Department and the Clay County Sheriff's Office. They did not receive their grant request last year, so they are going at it again. And the main part of this is to reduce any type of sexual assault on campus, dating violence, stalking and things of that nature. And the Sheriff's Office would be part of investigating those incidences, but also education and policy forming.
Any questions for the sheriff? No, no, entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion to approve the request.
Second.
A motion to second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to comment that I appreciate, as always, you know, as we find great ways to partner with different entities in town, I certainly think this is important. Certainly, it's, it's something you hear about when things go wrong and so I really do appreciate that, that we're offering this presence and the service to have the university in town. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes and Sheriff, I want to echo your comments on National Police Week. Officer Wallene, one of our, you know, regional partners is Fargo and he was placed on the wall last night at the Police Memorial in Washington. I have six brothers on that wall that I served with during my time and I hope the public realizes how lucky we are to have the quality of people that we have in this profession. And this is a good week to recognize that I put my Thin Blue Line flag up yesterday and the, the guys I knew run through my head as all of us that have had losses in this profession, but the thing that, that sticks with me is that there's always somebody that steps up and fills the void. And that's been tough the last couple of years, but I encourage anybody out there that's got a desire to serve and, and work in law enforcement, not to be bashful about it, to go after it. I did forty years of it, I don't regret, yeah, don't regret most of it. There were times where I thought I should have got that CPA, but for the most part, it was just an absolutely rewarding career and I appreciate what you and your, your folks do.
Thank you and our, our community is very supportive. We're very fortunate to live in the work that, in this community, they are extremely supportive of their law enforcement, so we do appreciate, we do appreciate that and we don't take that for, for granted either, so.
So true, thank you, Sheriff. All right. Get my paperwork here. Annabelle, you're up. From Public Health, request for approval of opioid suicide prevention grants.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time this morning to share about additional funding opportunities to advance substance and suicide prevention work in Clay County. I am Annabelle DeFault, Opioid Program Manager for Clay County Public Health. And Public Health in the last few months has been awarded two grant opportunities from the Minnesota Department of Health totaling seven hundred thousand dollars. Additionally, we have another application currently under review and an application that's in progress right now, due soon. So I'd like to share just a brief, high-level overview of each opportunity to seek approval of the funding. The first is the Minnesota Department of Health Community-Based Substance Misuse and Suicide Prevention Coalition Grant. This grant intends to serve youth ages ten to twenty-four in Clay County. And we know that suicide and substance use share many risk and protective factors, so with this grant, we aim to address both areas by working with our coalition that we already have established to select strategies leveraging partnerships and relationships from that coalition as well. So this is an opportunity that I will co-lead with our Suicide Prevention Coordinator, Karen. And this grant is for five hundred thousand dollars over the course of four years and that grant agreement will be June first, roughly two thousand twenty-four through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. The next grant that we were awarded is the Minnesota Department of Health Drug Overdose Prevention Grant and the purpose of this grant is to provide culturally-specific overdose prevention to underserved communities. And with this opportunity, we will work very closely with Churches United to meet the needs of the guests that they serve through their various locations. And this opportunity is two hundred thousand dollars over the course of four years, starting June first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. And both of these grants that we've been awarded will help to advance the work that's already being done and enhance our current efforts as well. An application that we are working on right now that is in progress is the Minnesota Department of Health Drug Overdose Prevention Town Grant. So Town is tackling opioids with networks. This is a very clinic-based model that focuses on increasing access and capacity around medications for opioid use disorder. This total award available is eight hundred thousand dollars over the course of four years and that grant agreement would begin June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four and run through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight if we were to be awarded that. And lastly, one application that we have submitted in our waiting funding decision is through the FM Area Foundation, their Community Building Grant. And this grant, the max award available is fifteen thousand dollars, which is what we applied for. This would be a one-time grant and the funds would go to support the new pilot project for opioid overdose response that we are working on in partnership with Moorhead Fire with their Community Health Alliance Program. And the funds specifically would go to help peer support recovery specialist time and any naloxone additional needs. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of the four grant opportunities.
Go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, first of all, I just want to thank Annabelle for, for the work to, to bring forward these different grant opportunities and really the vision of this board of how to deal with opioids in, in the, our community. Can you touch a little bit about what the impacts for your particular, for you particularly with these grants will, will provide?
Yeah, so for the Community-Based Substance Misuse and Suicide Prevention Coalition Grant, that is more broad substance use, not just specific to opioids, my work will continue in that grant with community-based trainings, especially trying to target college-age students with this opportunity. And then some curriculum that again touches on both risk and protective factors for suicide and substance use as well. So some of those strategies have not been selected yet since part of this opportunity is working with your coalition to select appropriate strategies, but my work will primarily be the substance use side of that. And then for the Drug Overdose Prevention Grant, I'll be working very closely with Churches United, distributing naloxone, helping them set up a safer use supply kind of hub within, I guess, mission and doing a lot of education and bringing in some culturally-relevant activity leaders and speakers to work with their guests and clients.
Are you, are you going to bring any more people in, on this program? Are you going to be doing all this here yourself or is there other people working with you to do this stuff?
For the Community-Based Coalition Grant, I will be co-leading that grant with the Suicide Prevention Coordinator for the county, so we will be kind of splitting responsibilities and teaming up on a lot of those. And then for the Drug Overdose Prevention Grant with Churches United, I'll work very closely with their staff who will be implementing pieces of the grant.
So if I, if I can, Mr.?
Go ahead.
Maybe to go off of what both Steve and Frank were asking, so for example, on the five hundred thousand dollars over four years, what are the funds actually being spent on?
Yeah, so some of the funds will go towards salary expenses, staff time. Other funds will be to support a program called Sources of Strength and that is more addressing the suicide piece of this grant, but again, with a shared risk and protective addressing the suicide piece of this grant, but again, with the shared risk and protective factors, that will be something that will address substance use as well with youth. So some of that will go towards that curriculum and activities. Other pieces of the funding will go towards advancing other efforts that are happening with suicide prevention work that Rory might know a little bit more about as well.
Just one thing I have noticed, we do not have a draft of the resolution with policies attached with this, at least I haven't gotten it in my packet. I don't think that's a deal breaker, but we are gonna, this is an action item, and we are going to need to address it with a vote.
I don't, I don't think the accepting or the grant application requires a resolution, just a motion.
Yeah, it's on here, but I think we're going to have to just tell the board here, we're going to have to pose a motion in support of this, in absent so what's indicated here. Yes?
Thank you, and then I'll let Rory, first of all, I just want to give my appreciation for applying for the grants. I know that grant prep and writing takes a lot of work, a skill in which I am not, I've not been blessed with, so thank you for doing that, because I know it does take a lot of legwork to get those even launched, to apply for them, so thank you for doing that. This is a huge amount of money, and I'm really excited about the work in which you can do with those funds. And I just want to speak a little bit, you named a lot of great community networking that can happen because of the funds that we've been allotted, but I do want to speak quickly and briefly to sources of strength. I have a kiddo personally in my home that was identified as a kid that could benefit from participating in sources of strength. And the networking and the accountability that was presented to him by having someone in the school, that really brought him into that, and then expected maybe a leadership, leadership skills from him out of that was really transformative and really helped launch him into high schools. I do want to speak about how great that is, and I talk all the time about why Bill Berquist was effective in this community, and part of it was, is that he made a lasting impact early on to kids, and then we saw him around the community and in the hallways of our schools, and so when we saw him, we kind of stood up a little taller and did what we were supposed to do. And I'd say probably Ruben Garcia did that for me in the high school as well. And so I'm hopeful that, I know that's kind of outside of maybe the grasp of exactly what this is supposed to do, but on the broader scheme and in regards to the connections you can make within the county to folks, I'm hopeful that that will have that positive impact for them as well, so thank you.
Rory.
Morning Commissioners. Maybe specifically to address like financials, so of those two grants that have been awarded, about 75% of Annabelle's time would be covered by those two grants. And so we're keenly aware of the desire to do this opioid work long-term, and that was something we talked about when the board initially approved this funding. And we feel some of the onus is on us to help find that and fund that, and we have the good fortune of, you know, I'd like to pat myself on the back for finding this young lady, she's got skills beyond what we even knew when we hired her, and so she's done a lot to help us secure that funding.
Just my observation on it, and we had this discussion long before you were hired, and I was somewhat frustrated with our lack of being engaged in what was such a concerning health issue in our community, and still a huge issue. And Annabelle, you hit the ground running, and it's been very gratifying to see the things you've moved into to address and pull the community together on this, so I'm certainly supportive of these issues. Commissioner Campbell.
I just want to mention, I've had the opportunity to hear Annabelle speak twice regarding your new role in this area, and I'm very impressed with what I'm hearing. And it's an area that is significantly important for our communities to address opioids, fentanyl, all sorts of different things that are out there right now that are really creating havoc. So I applaud you for what you're doing. We had you speak at our most recent Intergovernmental Committee meeting, and I think the, there was an awful lot of people that were impressed there, and it's even going to be considered maybe for, potentially for our next retreat. So I think you really, really, is negative of what you're dealing with is, the message is very positive.
Thank you.
And, you know, so I think that's really, really good. And I thank you for getting the grants, and hopefully, we're successful with this other one as well. Mr. Chair, if that's, if it's in order, I would move that we approve the opioid and suicide prevention grants.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded, further discussion?
I just have.
Mr. Chair.
Question. So before we vote here, when it, excuse me, can you mention a little bit, and maybe this is what I've heard you talk about a little bit before, but the upcoming grant that's in progress, have you already applied for it? Can you speak to that just a little bit, the prevention piece?
Yeah, the Town Grant?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the prevention side of that is the overdose prevention, it's kind of enhancing efforts that my role is already working on with overdose response trainings and naloxone distribution. I would say majority of that grant is clinic-based, with strategies for enhancing that medication for opioid use disorder happening in the clinic, and then my role would just help complement with the relationship building, helping increase referral pathways.
Very good. And if I may, for clarity, going back to the first one, is Karen Duszkiewicz, is that who we're talking about?
Yes, correct, yep, she would co-lead the grant.
All right, and then on the prevention piece, what is CHSI?
Community Health Service Incorporated, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
One more question.
Yeah.
So this one, this grant that you're still applying for, that we, and the others, is there, do we have the ability to expand our availability of naloxone to the community?
With the Town Grant, there is allowable expense for naloxone, so I could include naloxone costs in that as well, which would expand for nasal naloxone, which is more expensive and a little less accessible than intramuscular. So all of the grant opportunities would help with that, except with our Community-Based Substance Misuse and Suicide Prevention Grant, naloxone is not an allowable expense with that opportunity.
Thank you.
Steve.
Mr. Chair, just to kind of bring this around to some of the comments, I think one of the benefits of, again, these grants, as Rory mentioned, is that 0.75 of Annabelle's salary can be covered. The benefit is, is this board approved about 18 months of payment for this position, and what this will able, be able to do is to extend that along with the grants. And I think it's, one of the neat things about this is, in government, we generally react to, we have this issue, and we address it. What, a little different with Annabelle's position, is we know of an issue with opioids, but really, in those networker, networking opportunities, we're looking to find out what our community's needs are. And so generally, we have a program that we build. Here, we're establishing Annabelle, and then we're building on from there, and I think, again, thank you for reaching on those grants, because they provide additional opportunity. And I think being careful with your bandwidth of making sure that as you create, create these opportunities, that you're able to carry forward that work, and also, if there are other opportunities for funding for positions, that you're looking at that.
Thank you.
Is there an expiration date on naloxone?
There is, yes. Typically, it's been three years. Newer batches that were created, I think, after the 17th of January are now a four-year expiration for the nasal naloxone.
They just can't freeze, right?
They cannot freeze, no, and no extreme heat.
That is, brings up a question a lot of the law enforcement officers get, is why aren't you wearing it on your belt?
Mm-hmm.
And that's because you don't want it exposed to temperatures that are adverse to the efficacy, so it's in the car. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion to support these grant applications, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank you, Annabelle, you've really exceeded expectations, and we're happy to have you on board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I know while, Steve was talking a little bit too, and I think part of this original position was funded through some of our opioid settlement dollars too, correct? So, you know, I think as we go through this budget process moving forward, and with these there, and when it comes to the staffing issues, you know, if we've already established some opioid settlement dollars for this, and I don't recall how long we had anticipated, and we don't have to have a conversation about it now, I'm just, I'm just bringing this up, that maybe we need to revisit that and see how we can maybe expand our ability to fight this.
Sure.
In additional ways that could be beneficial to Annabelle to get the message out.
And Mr. Chair, maybe I can, Kathy can reiterate if I'm correct or not, I think initially, the dollars that we spent are from, are not from opioids, but we spent them out of our CARES reserve. That's how we were going to cover. And we did have a meeting, to your point, Commissioner Campbell, met this past week with Rory and also Carmen Barth, and we're looking at, finding out exactly what the opioid settlements, one of the challenges that we have from the National Opioid Settlement Foundation is that they're managing this, and they don't, you know, you would think you would get a list of, over the next 13 years, you're going to get payments, and it's going to be this amount. They don't have that, we find out, we don't even know when we're going to necessarily get our next check. But we, but we did, this board did approve entering into a new cooperative service agreement with the state, or an MOU, in addition to take on the Walmart, Tevya, Walgreens.
CVS.
CVS. And so we did, we just received notification that we're going to be receiving an additional $363,435.63 in payments, and so that will, once we receive those first two years' payments, will be just under $1 million, which if you recall, this board approved, approved $1 million to go towards our new withdrawal management.
Right.
And so the benefit will be is, especially with these grants, we're going to, and within the next most likely two years, we'll reach that $1 million threshold, and for sustainability purposes, any of that future funding this board could choose to utilize to foster this program.
And just to, and that is true, that we had, I think we, when we first got word of what our settlements were going to be on the opioid dollars, the discussion was had, and Public Health came to our board saying, don't spend it all on the substance use, because we're going to need to have other funds available for other purposes, including potential staffing of this. So the opioid settlement dollars did include a reserve of some of those funds, or what we're talking about.
You're correct.
That's where I was going with my earlier discussion, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is committee reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Kravonoff. No, I'm sorry. Commissioner Mojo.
Last week, I had a conversation with Nathan Zacharias from AMC in regard to strategic outreach for legislative issues, particularly broadband grants and the requirement of prevailing wages on that, so we did make some connections with senators on that. And also, last week, we had AMC Tax Forfeiture Work Group meeting, thanks to Steve for sending quick emails out to legislative representatives in regard for a call to action on that one. As we all know, the last week and a half of session will be, or now week now, of session will be a little wild. So we did have the tax forfeiture meeting to discuss the new agreed-upon settlement language. There's been some good and bad changes in regards to that bill and regards in, excuse me, in what the counties would like to see. We were able to clarify several provisions in that bill, incorporated some preferred language. The one part in there is, we are not successful in keeping at the suggested minimum bid to include on all property taxes owed prior to that public sale, or that 5% realtor fee, if you will, but overall, we're really excited that that has gotten to the point that it has really feel like it helps that $109 million that is in, as of right now, that will go to counties to help offset because of what the Supreme Court decision was, is good. Yesterday, I attended the Withdrawal Management Detox Facility Construction Meeting. It's been a little bit of a wet spring, so they're a little delayed, not too bad, though, in regards to timeline. We're still hoping on getting staff in there in August and opening to patients on September 1st. Got updates in regards to the windows and masonry that's going in there, the window sills are completed. If you've driven by, they're adding, starting to add the stone. And then did move the sign in between the buildings over a little bit, so it would not be on that geothermal well area. And then had the meeting for the DMV as well. Things are starting to come together there, they were able to pour concrete yesterday, I believe, and then they'll be able to shift over, and they, let's see, was a small change in pricing, 786 in regards to a roof cap metal color upgrade, but overall nearing completion there. So we're talking about mitigating the move and when that would be, we're hopeful that certainly, as of right now, I don't want to jinx anything, but we're looking at an October move, understanding we need to give 90 days for our lease at the center mall, but, you know, as in the next six weeks, eight weeks, we'll know more, pending no delays. And I believe the generator is, either arrived yesterday, or it's arriving soon. And I think that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. On May 7th, we had a diversion authority planning committee meeting, and it was really somewhat limited to two items. The first one was the next steps in the search for an executive director. We had quite a bit of discussions regarding what that might now look like this far into it. As most people are aware, the target date for that project to be operational is 2027. And of course, the executive director position, after that is up and operational, will become something different. It'll become more of a managerial type of a deal, once that's done. So we had a lot of discussion about what that executive director position will look like now, and then after it's operational. And, you know, we've had some of those discussions, and we're going to be bringing it to the full board to further discuss what the full board would want to do in terms of that. And in addition to that, we talked about an employee handbook, and there was really no, through the HR, there was really no handbook directed specifically for diversion employees, now that they were separated from Cass County. And so the handbook would deal with the issues such as, you know, sick leave, vacation, and all of that type of stuff. So we had some discussions with that, and there's, the co-executive directors are going to, I think they're going to have some discussions with HR and come up with a potential solution to that, or recommendation on what the full board should do. On Wednesday, May 8th, we had a Budget and Finance Committee meeting for the dispatch, and that was a joint meeting with the executive committee. And that was a joint meeting with the Executive Committee. And what we did is we went through the 2025 budget. And then we got our first look at that, had some questions. That's going to go back to the Executive Committee for their final approval and recommendation, which then it goes back to the Budget and Finance Committee at our June meeting with the recommendation to the full board, which would then hopefully pass it at their meeting, the full board's meeting in June. And then we also did, looked at our year-to-date budget. There were a lot of things incorporated into that 2025 budget, including the anticipation of that, of the dispatch, number of dispatchers being at full hire, which is quite good. And they had talked about, they'd reserved, I think it was $280,000 in reserves to hire those when they first got hired. And apparently now those are going to probably be up and going yet in 2024. And so for 2024, it's, the dollars are already there. But for 2025, it's going to create an increase in the total cost. And there is preliminary numbers out there of what each county will be paying for 2025. But there's, even after that meeting, there was some slight corrections that were done to that. So we'll be able to report by June anyway and what our cost will be for that operations for 2025 for Clay County. On Thursday, May 9th, I had, I also did attend virtually the dispatch meeting on the 9th in the morning, but I'm going to let our board chair report on that one. Then on the, that afternoon of May 9th, I was at the Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting in Fergus Falls. And a lot of, a lot of good things happening in that area. A lot of it deals with school districts and what goes on in, you know, school districts. I also serve on their facilities team there. And we're going to be, I'll be going there tomorrow to Alexandria to look at a facility that they're looking at taking over that also deals with kids with special needs, a special school set up for them in Alexandria. So that looks like a really good opportunity for Lakes Country to move forward with that. So I'll be there for that. Yesterday, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting. And it was supposed to include discussions with the diversion MOU. We had to delay that. We had, one of our presenter was unfortunately out ill yesterday. And so we, that part we didn't talk, but we did talk about, it was brought up about there's three, going to be retirements coming up. There's going to be three motor grader retirements, a shop form in retirement and some maintenance worker issues coming up. So there's going to be some significant adjustments going to be made in the labor area there. And so we, you know, Justin wanted to talk about the timing of being able to advertise for that. So we, some of that will happen pretty soon. We, there was a request to, for adopt a highway signage thing that did not meet MINDOT standards. So Justin basically had told these people who had requested it, basically told them no. And he just wanted us to be aware of that. So, and I think the, one of the signs that they said, they wanted to have a sign that said Saturday is the Sabbath. So I, you know, I think there's different people that might have different things that they might want to have. And I think we want to, the best thing is if we follow MINDOT's rules and regulations on that, we don't get into individual requests. Our five-year plan is going to be, we're going to be getting our first look at that in June. It's been delayed, of course, because of the, we wanted to wait to see if there was any, if we were going to be successful in our opportunities with that county, or county 26 project. And it looks like now that's not going to be the case. But, so we will have updates, an updated plan coming forward. And construction update, KESAA 1 and 26, and there's box culverts, all are in the works. I think they're all going to be starting very shortly. Yesterday, we had our, also had our Clay County Withdrawal Management Facility Meeting. Commissioner Mojo reported on that. Hoping that we can, because that's coming up quite soon, as Commissioner Mojo said, we're going to probably gain access to it in August with the September timeline open. And so we are, we are looking at, I think Steve and, and Justin are going to look at establishing an open house opportunity for the media and the public to get in there and see that before it becomes operational. We also had our motor vehicle meeting yesterday. And I don't think I really have any more to report other than what Commissioner Mojo reported on that one. And then the fourth meeting that I had yesterday was also the kickoff meeting through our Building Committee regarding the potential future psychiatric residential treatment facility, PTRF or PRTF, excuse me. And we were, and we had gentlemen from Solutions there. And the idea there is really try to understand the scope of what this project would be, how big it might need to be. And, you know, some preliminary questions about how the, how a layout should look. All of that, of course, is to establish a cost. I know Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Kravonoff have been working at state level. And, you know, I reminded about, I think there was some discussion, you wanted to get us on that bonding tour this summer. And so we're hoping to have some additional answers available in regards to, you know, what might be costs of that project, including the B3 costs, the potential that would be there, as well as even maybe a, the idea that we, we'd have a site available. So a lot of this is going to happen quite rapidly. I think our next scheduled meeting, I think we're going to schedule for another two weeks to have another meeting like that. But overall, a very, very good, a lot of discussion. It was a pretty long meeting, but a lot of discussions were had. And, you know, I think we're, we're just trying to get to a point where we have a good design plan that when we go to ask for funding, we have something to back it up. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Last Wednesday, went to the Wild Rice Watershed Board meeting. There, they approved a levy for going around Pearlie, city of Pearlie. I don't know if you drive up Highway 75, you'll realize Halsette and Hendrum have already done that. Now Pearlie's going to do it. I think Georgetown will be done with the diversion. So most of the towns are going to be protected by dykes real quick. There was a FEMA, they put in for funds for the FEMA for cleanup and of ditches. And they found out, ditch cleanup is not eligible funding from FEMA. So they had to take the cost of that. They had, bit of discussion on the open meeting law. Talked to be about being conscious of, when you put out an email, that there's discussions with these emails amongst people that can be considered part of the open meeting law, to be cautious about that. It was nice to see a new board member, Matt Borgin, was there and to be part of the members. Highway tracking on yesterday morning. Commissioner Campbell's already discussed that. So no need to put any more discussion on that. And then last night, because of timing and stuff, I was able to go to Goose Prairie Township and talk there and Hagan Township and Eulen Township. So I went to three township meetings last night and it worked out real good and had good discussion. Thank the people for their participation and their township officers. And they had a lot, they got a lot of stuff going on out there. I mean, they're talking mostly on roads and stuff like that, but it's a lot of discussion of gravel payments. And Hagan Township's very, have quite a few gravel pits. And they were very happy with the payments they received. So that's my meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Kravonoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first meeting I had was last week was on Wednesday. We had the Cass Clay Food Commission meeting that is held several times a year in front of the City Commission Chambers. There were two spotlights, if I could use that word, of producers that are providing cultural foods in our area. One was a spotlight on Colton Family Farms. They're just north of Moorhead, a few miles here. And he's been in operation since 2017. And he, beside raising a lot of food, you know, plants that are eaten in Africa, which we have a large community in Moorhead in Fargo area. Anyway, he has started, he's a registered grower of African eggplant. He produces those and working along with the Northern Crop Institute over in NDSU. And as he's gotten this developed over time, that and other produce, he is with Grape Foods Food Bank, providing 12,000 pounds of produce. And then also he's a regular provider of food at the Asian, Asian American supermarket over in Fargo. So it was a really a good spot on presentation that he gave. The other one was a group, Latino group that is called CASA. And that's about engaging food and families together. And CASA meaning cultural friends and health and environment. And anyway, they just talked about what they were doing, looking for land to start a community garden. And there was some interest, maybe by West Fargo and potentially even nowhere. So we'll see where that goes. And again, that's just to bring, he raising foods, creating a social environment for some groups and have sharing of food among our area here that they can work with. So a lot of the community gardens are up and going. It's planting time, so we'll see as the community gardens continue to grow around the Fargo-Moorhead area, which, and along with the farmers markets, right? That's where a lot of this ends up to. So then the next day, I had the Clay Soil and Water Conservation District Monthly Meeting. Couple of things to point on that one. This year, they are not going to be doing their regular fall tour, but instead they've been part of a grant that they received through Board of Soil and Water Resources. And the project's about cover crops and it's called Soil is Alive on Highway 75. So Walker County's going to do it the first day, July 9th. And then on the 10th, they're going to have a tour of, on cover crops and some of the research and, you know, the pros and cons of what's going on. We're going to be getting an invite for that. And so commissioners are welcome to take part of that on July 10th. And that run from 9 till 3 in the afternoon. One of the things, I've been around this for a number of years, but when we started with the legacy amendment in 2008, you create a whole bunch of money within, three eighths of sales tax throughout Minnesota goes into this fund. And it's grown, it must be right at $300 million now a year. And from that, we've had, which we, you know, Frank So Well reports on every monthly meeting as well as through the Buffalo Red, they have the one watershed, one plan. And I just want to, I was amazed when I heard the numbers the other day. In Clay County, on the Buffalo Red and two separate funds, they've received as a whole for their watershed districts, just shy of $6 million now. It's just an amazing amount of money. And 45% in the Buffalo Red, that one watershed, one plan, 45% of that comes to Clay County. And the Wild Rice, 12% comes to Clay County. And they're spending and they're implementing all this money immediately. I think out of the pool of the last $4 million, there was $120,000 left. So I mean, and they're just using it up. So I just wanted to give that number out there, what an effective program this is, it's doing. Also, in April, the SWCD Board, as our, are working with the Ag Inspector. As Ag Inspector, they work along with Justin, our Highway Department, and they set up their county spraying plan. So that all looks in order. I think it's around a $30,000 budget this year for spraying of the ditches. And tree planting is, with the weather being so good, things went in quick and they only have about six jobs left. So they were happy about that. And then on Friday, I had my finance meeting for the Circle and Cultural Society. Reviewed all the accounts and everything looks in good order in what we're doing over with that organization. That's my report.
Thank you. I had one meeting last week and that was on May 9th. We had the Triple RDC Authority Board meet. A lot of business was covered. One of the things in old business, we had wanted to try and get a general idea of the value of the current Triple RDC Dispatch Center located on NP Avenue in Fargo. And the tax, Cass County tax rolls show that it's just north of $419,000. In looking at how this plays into financing of the new dispatch center, we're going to need a backup center in some form or fashion. And some of the older equipment and consoles are going to be reserved for that use. In removing them and setting them up somewhere, a great portion, if not all or more, of the value of the property would be involved. When I asked for specifics, they were a little hazy. And I said, before we take it before the board, we need to have some firm numbers or at least a firm estimate. And so that's, that remains to be seen. We had the final bids come in. SEH, the architecture firm contractor that's handling this brought it forward. The final cost of the project is going to be, is estimated to be $16,29,017. That puts us a little north of $2 million over, $3 million over what the original cost estimates were when we started talking about the project. Our North Dakota Partners meeting is sometime this week to discuss it before the next meeting on how that difference will be covered. We are, the Minnesota Partners are locked in at a set rate, which we've already contributed for this project. And we will have a meeting, special meeting this week to vote on the bids that we've received, accepting them and getting moving forward. And that completes my report. Steve, you got anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I met with Sheriff Amptin and got an update on the staffing openings. Last Tuesday, I met with Sheriff Amptin and got an update on the staffing openings. The, also, just to update the board, I did, did come to an agreement with the owner of the home on 19, 918 9th Street North. We're working with Clay County Abstract, and we'll be bringing that before you in the near future. I did also have contact with the owner of the 914 9th Street North, and it indicated that they're still not interested in selling their property. On the 8th, met with Joe in regards to some of the family, family service center space needs. As Commissioner Mojo mentioned, also sent out some letters in regards to the tax forfeiture. I met with Commissioner Kravonov on a series of issues, including tax forfeitures. On the 10th, we had a MACA Legislative Conference. Again, talked about the session bonding. We talked about cannabis. It appears that there's going to be, they want to have Minnesota grown cannabis by the time that it becomes legal on January 1st, and so they're looking to provide growers licenses earlier than what they first anticipated. And so we're reacting to that. I think, as I've shared, we have a number of our departments that are impacted by cannabis that have been meeting, and we'll have, hopefully, an ordinance here very soon before you for your consideration. But we're still waiting from the MPCA to provide guidelines for quarry baying and the landfill, but we're hoping to be able to address a number of the other issues through that ordinance. As I mentioned earlier, we had a meeting on the opioid settlement dollars. Again, we're looking to try to get a handle of what, what that looks like for future funding as best we can with the information that's provided. I did receive a reach out from Judge Rosenfeld and put her in contact with Annabelle, and looking at some additional court, court thought process on how to use those dollars. Let's see, on the 10th, had preparation of department head evaluation, also talked with Rhonda Porter in regards to the PRTF situation. Just of note for the board, Quinn Jaeger did start his overlap on Monday with Rhonda, and so they have hired their supervisor replacements, and so they're, they'll be moving forward. There's been ongoing training, but moving forward here with some ongoing training. The bad part is that means Rhonda's down to seven weeks, and so she's, she's full bore here right till the end, and we appreciate her and wouldn't expect, wouldn't expect anything different. On the 13th, again, participated in the owners' meetings that have been addressed. I think just on the, on the detox, just wanted, on both projects, just want to give a shout out to Gert's Construction and their staff. They've really done what they said they were going to do. I think that, again, barring any issues, we're going to have contingency dollars that would be able to be returned on this project. One example they shared yesterday is Commissioner Mojo mentioned about the stone going up around the building, rather than, rather than creating temporary heating services that would cost the county money, they just waited and got that done. And so it's been a, it's been a good project to this point. DMV, again, I think that just the only other thing is that they're looking at, you'll see a parking lot here in the next week or so, they're working on curb and gutters this week, and do it in a phased approach, and you'll see that road that'll connect back into the resource recovery. We're excited, next, next meeting, a month from now, is we're going to be having another tour of that facility. Now, the PRT, PRT, PRTF kickoff meeting was addressed by our commissioners. I don't really have anything new to add on that piece. And then just one item, there's several, several different upcoming meetings that are scheduled as commissioners. I did send out an email in regards to a late invite from the city of Morehead in regard to Star and Tribune, all of their editors coming to town. If there's any interest, I know Commissioner Kravonov has reached out, but we could have one other commissioner attend that meeting. Again, it's, would be at River Haven on the 15th at, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. And there is a registration requirement. It is free, but, so if anyone's interested, please let us know. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything for us, Brian?
I've got one more. I forgot the report. I was at the PTRF meeting too also, Commissioner Campbell reported on it. No further thing on it.
Okay. Chair, you got anything for us? All right. Any additional from anybody? If not, we're adjourned.